I don't know who is, who is doing our IT anymore. Is it TDS or is it Transvideo?
The Internet is Transvideo.
Well, let's call them and see if we can get a boost.
Yeah, okay.
George is usually very good about that sort of thing. At least he comes out to the Falls and helps me as I act like a dog. And then he helps me.
See if you get that.
I did.
Can you open up Apple's documents?
I received, I received Lydia's text. I'm all set.
Can you hear us much better, Dave?
Clear as a bell.
Nice.
Thank you, Lydia. It being seven o'clock, all present accounted for. Would everyone join in the pledge of allegiance?
To apply the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any need to adjust the agenda?
The only thing I would mention is that under the Select Board, under E Development Review Board Alternative, we've just tabled that. We still have not received the correspondence that we were looking for in that. So we respectfully ask to table that item.
Okay. I would remind all our participants this evening, if you would, please put yourself on mute until you're recognized to be, until you're recognized. Kind of different perspective from sitting over here tonight. I can see a lot more detail. Public participation, there's none scheduled. I would look for approval of minutes.
Move the minutes?
Moved and seconded. Comments, questions? Charlie?
Last, during the ARPA request last time, I didn't see it in the minutes. But there was just, was I mistaken? Did I understand that there is a frisbee golf course up at the school?
Yeah, they do have this golf course.
It's defunct.
Yeah.
They have to fix it.
Because of the July storm?
Partly. And partly it was just not maintained well.
Okay, that's, but that's, that confirms what I understood. And it wasn't a minute, so just wanted to ask. And then I've got stuff related to different topics, but I'll do that later.
Mary?
Yeah, I had one triviality on the second page. About one, two, three, four, five, six lines down. It should say, are you there?
Yes.
Say these bridges often span muddy areas affecting nearby vernal pools.
Affecting?
Affecting. Nearby vernal pools. And I know this is true, that this is what it should say, because I called Mr. Whalen and asked him. And he said, yeah, that's what it should say. That these vernal pools are so fragile and they want to main, you know, they want to protect them from the effects of muddy places on the trail. And it's a way of balancing, you know, the use of the trail by the bike people and maintain, and the use of the vernal pools by the salamanders.
I misunderstood. I thought the vernal pools were causing the trouble.
Yeah, no, that's, and I just, I just asked him about that. So that was, as far as I can tell right now, I believe that was the onlyest thing that I had to say.
Thank you, Mary. John?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Lydia?
Page six. Under the part where it says motion pass 410. In the first paragraph towards the bottom, it says that Board Member Petty also wanted it confirmed that the improved trails would be fully accessible to the general public. I think that was maybe, I went back to listen to the video to try to figure out what that was. We had a conversation about accessibility and accessible trails and types of accessible trails. But I already told people and knew that the trails are already open to the public. So I wasn't asking for any confirmation of that. So it could just be, it could just, yeah, you could just strike it, I think.
Anything else, Lydia? Okay, very good. I'm all set. Further discussion on the minutes of June 25th.
I have one more thing to say. Lydia, I think that that's an important point. Whether you brought it up, I don't, I don't think he did. But I think Dave did actually bring it up. Can, can it be confirmed that there be in writing, Dave said, I remember, it be in writing that the general public be allowed to use it?
I think you're right, Mary, but yeah, it might be in there already before that. I don't know.
I'll have to reread it. Let me just look.
At the first part where we talked about it, maybe?
No, it should just say Board Member Maxwell also wanted it confirmed that the improved trails should be accessible to the general public. And he wanted it confirmed in writing. Which I also discussed with Mr. Whalen, by the way. He said he's gonna have all that.
Yeah, Mary, I think it was in the first half of the conversation.
It is in the first half of the comments too, yeah.
But that portion of the question, right?
So just take it out, what she said about, about that Petty, just take that sentence out, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
As long as it's in there that we want that.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended for June 25th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. 500. Next item is approval of bills.
Move warrant 1-25 and 1-25B through G. For a total of $555,054.18. Second?
Moved and seconded. Charlie, questions?
On page 14, the Spotless Cleaner has got two, it appears that you're splitting the bill between Historical Society and the library. Is, is that how I determined that on page 14?
No, it should be entirely just for the building, for the library.
So, all right, so on page 14, and they have two entries, and they, why is it split?
You mean up top the heading, Library Historical?
No, where am I with page?
Four different invoices.
So halfway down on page 14, it says Library Historical Society. It's got these cleaning services. And then on the next page at the bottom, it's got these cleaning services again, and it's all listed under the same account. I thought maybe it was because you're splitting them between Historical.
That's the municipal building on the next page. Yeah, so they clean this building, they clean the municipal building, and the police department.
All right, that's, that was a simple question.
Sure, yeah.
Didn't see it was being double billed, or I know that would never happen, but.
Anything else, Charlie? Okay, Mary?
Nothing.
John?
On page 12 is the tow of the 21 Chevy to Burlington. What's the story on that?
Yeah, they had difficulty with that, and they had to take it to Burlington. Unfortunately, it's my understanding that there was some, that was taken care of under warranty. But I can get more detail. Again, it just, he couldn't get it started, so they wanted to take it to the dealer.
Okay.
Technology.
Yep.
It doesn't.
Oh yeah, it's terrible.
On page 16.
15?
16. There's the electric for the Kent Street Garage, and I'm curious what is kept in the Kent Street Garage?
That's the garage where we put the meter reader vehicle plus the, there's material stored in there. So it's that building next to the parking lot. The one where they were gonna put the SERB building at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Just curious, that's all?
No, no, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, John. Lydia?
Page, sorry. Oh, I was wondering on page three, the support and licensing down at the bottom for Tyler Tech for $13,700. I was just wondering what that is.
Yeah, it's just software for a computer system.
Is it like a, it's an annual?
Yeah. And stuff, all that stuff is so darn expensive.
Similar question on page 14. I notice we've had the elevator on like a thousand, how often do we pay for the elevator maintenance contract?
I'd say, it's a nerve, is it yearly or a hand, or a month?
I think there's one that's yearly and then one that's quarterly.
Right.
Cause I feel like it's been on the last couple.
Well, we had an issue.
Okay, so there was a.
Remember, we had the violations.
Yeah, I just noticed that we've been spending a lot on elevators recently, so, and I wondered if there's like a total cost. I'd be curious, like, how much does that elevator cost?
Yeah, we can, what I can do is get you.
I know we need it. I'm not suggesting we don't.
No, 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 I can get you the annual fee, they, you know, that plus. Every time there's a major issue, they have to come and fix it. And again, there was the violations.
Yeah.
Took them a bit, but they corrected that.
At the moment, we spent $2,093.
Okay, 2,093.
Okay, thanks.
That's not bad.
I'm glad it's not my car.
That's it.
Thank you, Lydia. Welcome, Laurie. I didn't know you were in the meeting. Page 10, Observation. We're paying the bill from 2023. Towing. Any reason we just received the bill?
December 2023.
The 2017 ambulance, is that when it broke down on 89?
Yeah, that's the ambulance, yes.
Yeah, that was the ambulance. Yeah, they had a breakdown as well. Fortunately, it didn't involve major issues, but it was, it did require time.
That was my question. My question was, why are we now paying a 2023 bill?
Why was it delayed? So.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess it's just.
22 or 23?
23. It was December.
I think Dave said 22.
No, I said 23. 20, it's December of 23.
Delay in getting it to us.
Okay, that's all I needed. There wasn't anything on our end. I would be shocked.
Yeah, I know.
That's all I had. Further discussion on warrant. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving warrant 0125 and 0125B through G in the amount of $555,054.18, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. 500. Biweekly receipt payroll.
Move approval of the biweekly payroll for, through June 23rd, 24th for $105,596.62. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the Select Board?
I thought we weren't approving this anymore because it's already been done and we just said.
Receiving.
Receiving it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we did change the agenda.
So it says, okay, all right.
Did I say approve or?
Yeah, you did.
I did?
Yeah.
Yes. I think you heard.
I might have.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving the biweekly payroll through June 30th, 23rd, 2024 in the amount of $105,596.62, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. 500. Next item under Select Board is the approval of 2425 tax rates. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Yeah, so it's that time of the year where the board is being asked to approve the, the tax rates. This is for the, obviously for the year, F like 2425. Once you approve these, if you do, then in the next week and a half or so, we'll put together bills and send those out. As you can see from the tax sheet, comparison sheet that we provided, the Homestead tax rate is increasing from 2.651 to 3.005, which is a 3.54% increase. Works out to a 13.35% increase. So that's the Homestead. The non-Homestead rate is increasing from $2.91 to $3.32, which is a .408 increase or 13.99% increase. As you recall, obviously, you know, the voters approved the budget and approved an amount. So, you know, you're setting the tax rate based on that, that budgeted amount approved by, by the voters. And the grand list.
I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 2425 tax rate. Second?
As presented.
Moved and seconded. Comments? Charlie?
You bet I do. First off, I'd like to comment that this is the first time our tax rate has gone above $3, as far as I know, according to the stats. And then I have this. Since the turn of the century, Norwich University has made a donation to the town for emergency services that Northfield would not necessarily fund if Norwich was not part of the community. The genesis of that donation solved the question whether go to courts to determine whether Norwich University had developed properties exempt by statute commercially or were not totally educational. If they were outside of solely educational purposes, Northfield felt taxing these properties followed the law. Norwich University did not. A donation gift, slant, gift was agreed upon to avoid litigation. Every college or university in the state contributes to the town hosting them. The state of Vermont uses the term pilot payment in lieu of tax. The town-gown relationship prospered and together the donation grew to reflect actual costs, depreciation, capital savings for replacement of aging equipment for emergency services that exist today. As of this day, we have not received the payment scheduled for the budget that ended eight days ago. And yet, we are setting the tax rate with a known deficit of $233,000 plus. Northfield budgeted the gift based on history of donations. The increase in costs that we all are affected with as of July 1st, Northfield is entering the new fiscal year with a known deficit because Norwich University is reneged on their donation, telling financial hardship due to pandemic. As far as I know, at no time has Norwich University approached asking for, Northfield for, approached Northfield asking for relief. Because of the pandemic, Northfield has used tens of thousands of ARPA funds for loss of income from Norwich University's decline in water and sewer use during the pandemic, according to the rules set out by the federal government. Departure, the departure of decades of past practice of making donations to the town and is material to the discussion. More importantly, Norwich University is seen as a corporate neighbor and we fear not receiving a budgeted donation will affect this town relationship. I request this board, through the manager, to use this language to generate a letter to the university trustees directly asking why after decades, decades of volunteer donation, Norwich is jeopardizing the town-gown relationship. So what's not on the letter is what happens? How do the people understand what is going to happen if that donation does not come in?
So are you specifically asking whether it's gonna do the budget or how that?
If we don't get this donation, after the town voted to, to, on a budget that included this donation, we're gonna be $233,000 plus short, shortfall, a known deficit that we're setting the tax rate with right now. We can't assume we're not going to get that. We can't redo the budget because the people have already voted for it. We're gonna be deficit spending short of that money.
So when you, when they approve the budget, obviously the revenues are an estimate. We don't know exactly what those, and hear me out, we don't know exactly what those revenues are gonna be. So they are estimates. If those funds do not come in, based on recent budget status reports, I'm pretty confident that we will not, the municipality will not be facing a $230,000 shortfall.
That's gonna be a separate discussion.
So.
But this is, this is very sad that we have to set a tax rate, the highest Northfield's ever experienced, knowing that we have a deficit caused by someone.
Clarifying question, however. The donation that we haven't received is for the year that already ended.
Right.
Right. So.
We're talking about.
We know that there's a deficit.
Yeah, yeah, right. So we're talking about the year moving forward.
I know, I'm, what I'm saying, I guess, is actually pointing out that it's potentially more than what you're describing, because it's.
Right, it has an effect.
But, but again, more specific to your question. It will, you know, it will put a slight strain on the, on the budget. But again, based on what we're projecting in terms of the year that ended, I don't see that we'll have the amount of deficit that you're, you're talking about. So I just, you know, I'm happy to report that. But again, those are funds that, you know, the, the budget was built upon and anticipated. Again, those, those are estimates. I mean, there's no guarantee on any of those revenues. You know, whether it's interest income or should it be, you know, marriage license, I know those are small amounts. So anyway, it just.
Right.
It is, it is concerning, but again, we.
So is it time, can we get this board to agree to send the trustees a letter that carries most of, or some of the, expresses our concern that this is the third year that this has showed up late and has, has not met the budget? Or do we just wanna wait? Okay?
I think we ought to wait until we have our discussion with the president on Friday.
Does this enlighten your discussion? This information that he just said?
This is stuff we all should know, have known.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess Friday's gonna be just another day, but I think we ought to have this on the agenda if, so we can discuss where and how we proceed through this. And I have some ideas that I will discuss, which will be, when we have it on the agenda.
Yeah, I would love to discuss it more at a different time. I think, David, at our retreat, we had it on our long-term goals, or not long-term, but our short or midterm goals, to work on a long-term agreement with Norwich, not a year-to-year.
That is correct. That is correct. And I believe I informed the board, either our last meeting or the meeting before, that the first opportunity the Nor, of the subcommittee was going to have to meet with the president was going to be on July 12th, which the president, myself, John Stevens, his chief of staff, his CFO, and our town manager are scheduled to meet in the president's office. And subsequently to my, discussing that with the board, I followed up with the confirmation of the meeting with a letter to the president requesting that he keep in mind our concerns that have been brought up tonight. So, let's see what happens, and I'll be more than happy to put this on the agenda at our next meeting to have a full discussion.
Thank you. I'm done.
Mary?
I, I would be interested to hear what happens. We should put this on the agenda. Next, the 23rd or something like that?
Absolutely, as I said.
Do you have any comments on the tax rates?
No.
John?
I don't have any.
Lydia?
I'm all set, thank you.
Well, I have a couple of comments on the tax rates. I think this board has done a tremendous job in developing budget, trying to involve public participation and keep the budget within a reasonable amount of increase. Where it has gone afoul is our legislation. Our legislatures in Mount Tullier have not fixed the overall funding problem for funding education. And it is rearing its head severely. So I would say kudos to this board and the manager and the financial director in being prudent in developing a budget that is not out-of-control, double-digit spending and is responsible. So that's my comment regarding the tax rate. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Homestead and the non-Homestead tax rate as presented, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. 500. Next item on the agenda, revolving loan fund committee appointments and procedures.
Yeah, as I note, as I noted in my, thanks, Lord. As I noted in my report, the Economic Development Committee met a few weeks ago, had a productive meeting in regards to talking about the revolving loan fund committee. One of the key things related to that is that the state funding for that program is ending. It was a three, we got it to a three-year grant, so that program's ending. And also, there was a lot of questions about the format of the policy for that lending program before. One of the big issues was the not-so-favorable interest rates that would be offered, and there were some other issues. So my understanding was that the committee, or the Economic Development Committee, really wanted to bring it to the board and talk about kind of redamping the process and primarily taking another look at the policy and tweaking it, so to speak, just to make it more manageable, but also make it more of a enticing for potential businesses to participate. So I think Charlie had asked that it be on the agenda for that very purpose, so.
Can I add on?
Sure.
I feel like our, what, and Charlie, correct me if I say anything that you didn't hear at our meeting, that we have a big question that we want to consider, which is, do we want to continue a revolving loan fund? That's question number one. If we do, we had a $20,000 grant, dollar grant. If we do, we had a $20,000 grant, that's gone, but we had another $20,000 that the town has. So the remaining would be 20, that we, we would only have $20,000.
At this point, yeah.
At this point. So if we were to continue the revolving loan fund, Tom Davis did a ton of research, talked to a lot of other communities, found out that, that communities that have them have significantly larger amounts of money avail in the funds. And they keep a lot of it set aside earning interest and only some of it available to lend. So that's in the, the conversation of do we want to continue? Is how would we fund the revolving loan fund and how would we grow it? Most of them set aside funds in their annual budget. So we should, you know, consider that deeply before we take steps. Then if we are going to continue, we need to advertise and appoint a new committee. And at either before or after, we could decide whether we want Tom Davis and the Economic Development Subcommittee to work on trying to update the guiding document to have more favorable interest rates, suggestions of more favorable interest rate, fewer fees, something that would make this. We, we have not had any applicants until we have had just one, which is what sparked this conversation because there was no committee in place to review the application. The committee is supposed to then forward a recommendation to the board, and the board makes the, the final decision. So anyways, to go back again, do we want to continue with a revolving loan fund? If we do, how will we budget for it and grow the amount that's there? And then what steps do we want to take to launch a revolving loan fund committee? And oh, a couple little details from Tom. He heard from other towns that most of them have a minimum of 150,000 of available funds to lend, that it's likely not worth it if we can't grow the fund to keep going with it, that there's grants available, but towns like to budget contributions to the fund from their annual budgets, that they keep their interest rates low, usually lower than prime, and that they often use their funds to support affordable housing efforts. I'll throw it back to you, Dave, unless Charlie, you have more to add to that.
Well, so essentially, what we have is monies, we're acting like a bank. We need to scrub that from our memory bank and treat it differently in the form of economic development. When you have an interest rate for someone to borrow $4,000 to get them through some bad times, and your interest rate not only comes with as, at 10% as it's currently written, it also comes with two fees. So nobody's going to look at that fund to borrow from. So we got to fix it. So who's going to fix it? Well, the need is there in the economic development. I think Lydia and I can do a good job as a committee to do it. We'll go through it. Tom's already worked on it. We'll work with Tom. And if Lydia's, if my colleague on the Economic Development Committee participates or is, is willing to, I think we can probably turn this around in short order.
Maybe. I feel like I really want to hear from the full board, like, commitment to the revolving loan fund.
Well, we have to present them something.
Well, no. And how would we fund it? And it's some discussion about how it would be a sustainable thing. Like, we can't just pie in the skies, say we want it, but right now we have $20,000, which is not enough.
No, you're right. But it, but it's sitting there gathering interest.
It's more about the bigger picture in my mind.
It is, but you got to start small sometimes. I mean, we've got, if we had zero money, if we started off with zero money, we'd still be, still, we've got to start. We've got to rewrite this and change the philosophy that we are going to treat this like a bank and to, we're going to treat it like economic development. I think you and I could do that.
I don't particularly want to take that on with Tom Davis's help or with Tom doing it, yes. Because, but I don't, I don't want to try to write it myself.
I think we'd be working with Tom.
Yeah. I mean, I think most of what we have, I think, I don't know when the last time you all looked at our revolving loan fund document. It's, it's mostly okay. It's just changing some of the, the fees and the, and the interest rate is the largest thing. I think that needs to be adjusted.
Drop the fees, drop the interest rate.
But I also think we should have the committee too. And I don't know whether it'd be better to have the committee working on it with Tom than us. Because we, we need a committee to be able to run this too. So we, that's another thing to think about in the big picture conversation, is we know how hard it is to get a five, you know, a committee running.
Are there going to be citizens involved in this committee?
That's what, yeah, it would be like, just like all our other committees, of probably a five member is what would make sense in Norfield.
So how, have you got any ideas about who, who would be involved?
Well, you advertise to the public. We don't, you know.
I mean, I.
Some of the people who were involved in the forming of the document might be interested in continuing on as members of the committee, but.
I just am convinced that there's so many smart people in Norfield that, that there's going to be people who want to, people who want to, who, who know about numbers and who know about these kinds of things and about funding for public good and that sort of thing. And I agree with you that it does have, I agree with you, Charlie, that it does have to be rethought as, as a develop, as seed money, a development thing rather than a bank. The only information that I have, the only experience I have about revolving loan funds is that they were operated and, and people paid them back and it was, it was worked out quite well. So, and it helped people through a very bad time.
It does seem like Tom found that, I can't remember if he said the exact percentage, but a significant amount does not come back, I think. Many people repay, but not all. Like, you cannot expect that it's all going to come back.
No.
But on, on the positive though, he did indicate that a lot of towns he spoke to, a majority of the folks pay it back. But in each case, with each town, there was a number that didn't. Again, fortunately, the majority do pay it back.
Yeah. Well, and a lot of towns are, run them successfully for decades.
Right. And, and the data that Tom can find out would be asking the question, was it food service or lawn care? Or was it auto mechanic shop? Where were the funds most at risk?
That's true. There might be certain endeavors that are more risky than others.
Food service is one of, is one of them.
And most of the other towns too had like a bigger range. Because what was the max on ours? Is it that people could borrow?
Foods, probably five.
Is it five thousand? That's what I have in my head. And a lot of the other towns had larger amounts. But obviously, if we only have 20,000, we don't have.
No. If we only had 20,000 and you did five, that seems quite reasonable. But that, five doesn't seem like much if you're trying to encourage affordable housing.
Yeah.
But are we in a position to even talk about that? How much money would we need to have to encourage affordable housing?
Some of them have grown like quite large.
It would be an economic development fund and it would include, it would not deny affordable housing, but it wouldn't be the only thing that the fund would be eligible for.
Yeah. It's to support the establishment and growth of small and emerging businesses, good-paying, high-quality, sustainable jobs, improve the quality of life and financial health of the community, architectural features, storefront facades, benefit the environment. These are the things in our document.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't Capstone do this? Don't, doesn't Capstone lend money?
I think more on an emergency basis.
No.
Or actually.
Back in the day, they used to, back in my day, they used to lend money for startups in little businesses.
I know, I know currently for emergencies, but they also will assist folks with needed home improvements. I'm not sure about on the business.
Yeah, they did, they did. They had a program where they get funded people who were in little startups. And one of them was that food, was that hot dog guy in, in, Barry. Another one was the people who, I always pay attention to food, obviously. And another one was the people who made samosas, Indian food. And, and that guy did very well, I think.
Still doing.
Yeah, he's still doing it. The hot dog guy, I don't know so much if he did so well. But I think they also gave money for, you know, like, somebody wants to start a beautician's salon, a beauty salon. They need some scratch to start with that. I believe this was all a program, a financial, economic bootstraps kind of program that I know that Capstone did have at one time. But, you know, the decline of money everywhere may have struck the death knell for that. But I know that there's some information there. And they were not a big, they were just there to foster the kind of growth and the, the goals that you mentioned.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of other towns to look to that do this. It's mostly just a question of, you know, how would we, how, what are we willing to commit to it? And how could we fund it? Because, I mean, we still have some ARCA funds. Otherwise, we have to look at how we would fund it annually through the budget.
It's too bad Laurie, Laurie has left because she has institutional knowledge. We did have a revolving loan fund years ago in Norfield that was distributed and unfortunately, it was about 100% default from that program. My recollection, when we started down this path a couple of years ago, is the Economic Development Director at the time said there was this grant available and that Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation would be our go-to agency to, to be mentoring and to actually administer this program. I'm all in favor of reviewing our rates, reviewing our terms. I do think you bring a good point to potential down the line for housing, be it affordable or other. But I, I just caution that we, we have developed this, if you build it, they will come. Well, we built it and they didn't come. And it may have been because of the interest rate and the fees associated. But I'm not hearing a big clamoring of a need. And you were correct, Mary. It was called a micro-loan program. And I forgot what the name of the organization was before it was Capstone. But they did have a micro-loan program.
Yeah.
But I, I would certainly be willing to listen to further information on how we could grow a revolving loan fund for economic development activity in Norfield. We'd be stupid not to.
Well, we were stupid with the first opportunity for development, for revolving loan fund. We, there was businesses that did borrow and paid it back. And there was businesses that didn't, and we lost money. And then, for the frustration of not being able to recover the money that didn't get paid back, the village trustees may use that money for handicap accessibility at the municipal building. And after the funding agency discovered that, they had no desire to have any discussion with Norfield going into the future. So you have to, you're not, I doubt you're going to be able to find those funds like other communities did and didn't abuse them.
Well, we had a $20,000 grant. That's what Dave is remembering and what Jeff talked about at the beginning. And that's going back because we didn't, and we didn't use it.
I mean, just to clarify, we didn't get any funds. It was a reimbursement, but right.
We didn't get any funds because we didn't, you have any.
We had access to those.
We would have had.
But access to those monies, the interest that they had as part of that program was drove, drove, drove the cost of the money high out of spec.
I don't think it was them that drove the cost. That was all us.
No, they, they, they had an interest rate that was above prime, I believe. Once we went with.
Which, which one are you talking about?
This current grant that just, just have ended?
Yeah.
Just now?
As I remember, I, the interest rate, the, the fees associated with having that money being managed by that organization, I think it was regional planning, wasn't it?
So the funds, the actual grant program was through, the federal program was rural development. But one idea or thought was to have Central Vermont Economic Development Corp kind of manage some of those funds. And we didn't get to that point. But the committee had set the interest rate. The lending agency or the grant agency did not, my understanding, did not set a.
But the committee.
But it was recommend, I'm sorry. It was recommended by, that's, I think, where you're thinking. It was recommended by, again, the Central Vermont Economic Development Corp, that you do have a fee and you do have the interest rate that was at, at that higher rate.
And they also had a fee for managing it, the economic development.
They would have if we.
If, right. So the, the cost of the money just became ridiculously high. That point fell on deaf ears. Well, it sounds to me like we, we ought to at least appoint someone to work with Tom so we can answer this with historical knowledge of what he's encountering.
I, I agree. But let's hear from John. I haven't heard from John yet.
Well, I think a revolving loan fund is good. I just was puzzled by the rates and the fees. And so why people would really want to borrow from us unless the banks were saying, no way.
That's possible.
And I, if I can jump in, I think that's typically what happens with these programs. You'll have, you know, folks that, in part, because they're just starting out. Banks are reluctant, you know, with, with a new business that's just starting out without a track record. So they, I think most, what we found, most of the folks that start with these programs or have not been able to secure funding elsewhere. And that's where this program comes in.
Yeah.
So is there a consensus? Like, would the next step be that Tom Davis, with some support from the Economic Development Subcommittee, develop an updated draft of the Norfield Community Revolving Loan Fund document? And bring that back and then advertise for a committee? Versus advertising for the committee simultaneously?
If the, if any document he creates, if we're going to have a committee, then I think that whatever he creates should be in draft form, tracking the changes. So whoever is on the committee can see what was essentially not working previously and what Tom has come up with for changes to that document.
One thing I know from being on committees that aren't given a clear task, like, it's, I think it's much kinder of us and more productive to, to do the document and give it to the committee.
I agree.
And tell them, this is what we want you to do, rather than say, here, fix this document and then start trying to.
I, I'm glad to hear you say that.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Because I think if we give the direction and then get the committee going.
So my question is the following. Where does the current money stand a year from now? Is that grant dry up?
Yes, that, the grant is gone. We don't have access to the $20,000 in the grant, but we do still have 20,000 that we.
We broke, just a little over, I think.
Around 20,000. That was the town's.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just to clarify, with that grant, it initially was a one-year grant. And we were successful in getting two additional one-year grants. So we did run it for three years. But again, the, well, the state had said, you know, we can no longer, no fault of the towns, it just said they can't give any more than two, two one-year extensions.
I have, I have a question. Do the Economic Development Director have an opinion about this? I mean, there seems to be a little bit of redundancy here.
If I could answer, I think he's supportive of the program.
Is he?
As long as there are sufficient funds.
Yeah.
Again, I think, you know, like Charlie had said, I could quote Charlie. Said, you know, with a small amount of funds like that, you know, it's just difficult. And also too, the terms. So again, I, again, Tom had kind of the same concerns as a committee. But overall, I think if the rates were lower and the, and the amount of the fund was there, I think he, he did express his support for it.
Yes. But that's a really key part. And that's why we also, if we go ahead, we still need to talk about how would we grow the fund? Because that's our job more than some committee's job to figure out.
And to.
Well, the one thing that I would be cautious about is, is we're gonna, if, if we want to grow the fund, we want to make sure, and I see somebody online that's potentially a developer in town, that we have, they're going to use, we're going to use this revolving loan fund. What I would hate to see happen is we make earmark part of ARPA funding for this and it just sit dormant as the $100,000 Economic Development Fund did for at least three years before we started using it. So that would be my concern.
Yeah, I share that concern, Dave.
Man, you can combine it with the request that we already have for grant matching funds.
Well, that's the one I was thinking.
You could do the grant revolving loan fund grant matching funds and put, have a pool.
Yeah. I, I, I like that approach.
How does it all get spent by 2026?
No, we're, those will be separate funds. They'll be designated as Economic Development or.
Oh, wait a minute.
Economic, matching funds. So they'll, that money will be, will be appropriated into the general fund. And that, that, once it's in the general fund, it's part of the, it's part of the general fund. There's, it's been appropriated, it's been expended.
Yeah, but just, you're on, yeah, you're on the right track. More specifically, what you'll have to do is what we talked about, resolution. Set aside a certain amount of funds for, what was the term, for wages or, you know. And then those will go into the fund, into the, the general fund. And then when you develop the budget, you can establish those funds in a reserve fund through that process. So I know you were talking more globally, but specifically that's.
In a reserve fund is something that's voted by the people.
The other thing that we have available to us is the nearly $100,000 interest that has no restrictions.
That's correct.
Which I would like to see available for grant match, but maybe a tiny bit could go. Because grant matching could eat up 100,000 very quickly.
Yes.
And it's really important to our community, I think, to be able to come up with grant matches.
Well, will the committee report back?
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on next steps. We can tell Tom that he has approval to work on adjusting this draft to reflect the board's interest in having this be a lower bar for people to, to entry. Come back with that draft and at that time, share it with you all, get your approval of it. And then advertise to appoint a new committee.
Seems like a very reasonable plan to me.
Okay, and then we need to continue to talk about funding the fund in our ARPA conversations and again, in the future during budget season.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And use, if, I don't know what the balances of the economic fund that's, that's there now. Jeff, do you know that off the top of your head?
I, I think it's probably in the, the low 40,000, but I'll have to, I mean, yeah, I'll, I can double check that.
That, that could be, you know, a start also. They're 60. All right, so when will we expect to hear back from the committee?
Um. Yeah, I was going to say a month. So, yeah, about a month.
Sounds reasonable. Further discussion. During that, next item on the agenda is ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, fund requests. So if we all pull out our trusty. So in our last meeting, we requested, we had two presentations. And our first presentation was from the Conservation Commission and a student at Northfield Middle and High School. And we asked for further information from them. Subsequently, the board discussed of possibly having a joint meeting with the select board. And this could be a topic of discussion amongst others. I did float that idea with the chair of the school board. And they're meeting tomorrow in their retreat and he feels very positive that that will happen. My question to you would be, do we want an additional meeting other than our regular meetings for that?
I don't know how that has anything to do with ARPA, but.
Yeah, I think I got lost a little there. So we're going to meet, you, a joint meeting with the school board about to request for the BYCC?
Well, not necessarily. But I believe the discussion was, at the end of the meeting, during our ARPA, a suggestion was made, maybe we approach the school board as an opportunity to hold a joint meeting to possibly to discuss that request and others. So that's, I, and I floated that idea to the chairman and he was very, very open to that. And he was going to propose that to his board tomorrow, unless he hears back from me.
Well, I think that's a very nice idea. It gives you a peg to hang your hat on when you go there. And we'll see what comes up.
So if the board does want to do that, do you want to just do it as a regular meeting that's been scheduled?
Um, I feel like it should be additional. I don't know.
I, I think if we're going to meet with the school board, it should be additional.
Very good. So I will make, I will make it, I will make an approach to that and get some dates just to share with the board to see if that's available.
Dave, will we be talking about more topics? Because I'm not sure it's necessary for all of us to get together to talk about this ARPA request. It's a lot of people and a lot of time.
Yeah. Well, I propose this topic plus others if they had it or we have. So, yeah, I just am starting the ball, starting the conversation. And so it sounds like we'll have an additional meeting. If there are topics that the select board members want to bring up in a meeting, maybe we can develop an agenda, a co-agenda together.
I have one. I, I've been in communication with the accessibility, walkability people. Well, you all got that too. You all got the minutes from them. And they spoke about the difficult, they spoke about the difficulty at the school of, you know, the police officer, Chief Gomez, has said, and, and the accessibility and walkability people both have said that there's a problem at the school when the parents come there, you know, and they drop their kids off and they want to. So we need, we got a problem. So we need to address it jointly.
Right. We could put that down as one item.
That's a, seriously, that's a good point. I know it's a tough one for the police chief. You know, he says, you know.
It's very tough.
You know, they'll, people will ignore the signs and they're in a hurry and they're a little reluctant as they're picking up kids to, you know, to issue tickets. And it is a tough one.
It's really tough.
We should talk to them too in the same vein about our planned project for the sidewalks on Cross and Vine and just get any input that they might have from.
Yes.
Something we're not thinking of. And I know there was a time this year when the timing of our sidewalk clearing in the winter, lining up with kids traveling to school and just talking about how can we properly each other or like around cancellations and things too sometimes.
That's a good point.
Like, just making sure our communication channels are, are working.
Agreed. So I would ask each board member, if you have additional thoughts that come to you after, to please email them and I will forward it out to the chair, the select board, or to the school board to try to develop a, a, a working agenda.
Okay.
If there's any way we can help the schools keep their costs within reason. I mean, I don't know what, like, big brainstorming, like, how do we support them with their challenges, budgetary challenges? Is there any role for the town to play?
Well, the last time we had Dan attend a meeting, I'm not sure if you were on the board at the time, Lydia. That was a topic of our discussion, especially as it related to their capital plan and how that was going to affect the tax rate. And making sure that we're not double whammying the community, the taxpayer base by our capital projects, their capital projects are all hitting at once. So I think that's a very, very good point that needs to be discussed. And, and just having meetings together is a starting point.
Yeah. I'm excited we're going to do this.
Very good. Well, we used to do it back in the day. So my segue from that was we had those two requests, I believe we have asked the presenter to come back to the board with further information and letters of support from the school administration and the board on that. And that was the revitalization of the trail system up at the schools that are on school property and town forest.
Yeah. And I talked to them, I talked to Jeremy about this. He was very happy to talk to me and very forthcoming. And he said, I, I wish I could remember the term he used, but it inspired a lot of confidence. He said, you know, we're checking all the boxes. I think that was what he said. So.
That's good.
Did he say when they were planning to come back?
I asked him to come back next week, next meeting. And even though I won't be here, I'll be, I'll be virtual if I can manage it.
Very good. So why don't we just start from the top of our potential ARPA list? Obviously, the sidewalk improvements are estimated cost 600,000, 100,000 in the budget already approved, 500,000 in ARPA. Common update project study, 40,268. It is going to be, this study is being, a community outreach has happened. And DuBois and King are the, is the engineering slash architect firm that are going to make three proposals to the select board in September sometime. That's already been approved. We're upgrading of EOC installed generators at our emergency management buildings and the municipal building. And we approved that. Will there be any breaking news on that tonight, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Okay.
That could either wait till the banners reporter.
Well, why don't you, why don't you give us an update on that right now?
Yeah, so in terms of the generators, as I noted in my report, sent on RFP, had proposals due the end of the day yesterday. We did receive two proposals and haven't had a chance to analyze those. But we're fortunate, we got two proposals, two local businesses. So.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow, the next day. Been a little crazy, but have time to analyze those and award a bid.
Very good. I asked the manager to add this. Lydia asked me to, as a reminder, rebuilding of bleachers at Memorial Park. I believe the manager has signed a dollar value. I'm not sure how that was based. But that's $8,500. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so it was, I think it was probably about a year or so ago, we met with folks from, from the school. And then there was former, one former of the rec committee was on that. And we came up with a price at that time and I just adjusted that price based on that effort. Excuse me, that, the effort that we had done, so.
I know that that was more than a year ago because I wasn't part of that, this at all.
Oh, it wasn't a support discussion?
It wasn't. Do we have a proposal?
Yeah, so they do have a proposal, or they did have a proposal and.
I've never seen it.
This is on here, Mary, because Lynn Doni brought it up.
Yes, he did. I remember.
And many of us said we should be doing that, myself. And I think Dave said, yes, we need to take care of the bleachers. And then we said that we were going to come up with an estimate, which is what Jeff did. So it's on here now through Lynn, but the support, and I brought it up because I wanted to make sure it didn't fall off our list.
Yeah.
So there's not a, not a community request, like somebody filled out a form, but it's been requested before the ARPA money was even on the table. Lynn was reminding us about it and it's on here now as a, because members of the select board wanted it to be discussed.
So do you need a motion?
No, I wouldn't. Well, yeah.
What I would like to see first off is what exactly are these repairs? And it says rebuild. Number one, what are the rebuild, what is the rebuild? Because.
Basically, just to replace, I'm sorry, just to replace the boards on the, on the bleachers.
Okay. Because we did have a community request some time ago from Leslie Strube, if you recall, for a portable bleacher system. And I was wondering if that had any consideration of replacing these old system, meaning these boards, with a portable all aluminum system. And would it be appropriate to use ARPA funds for that where those grandstands could be moved from location to location as it's needed?
I, I find that much more attractive.
We can get a price quickly.
Can I ask a question about usage? I know lately, there's not, is, I, I heard that baseball's not using Memorial Park anymore. Is, can anyone tell me more about, you know, what do we need the bleachers there for now? If baseball's coming back or they're not using it? I think we still need bleachers probably, but I just want to make sure that we think about what, what they're actually going to be used for and.
Yeah, it's kind of up in the air. It's my understanding that particularly high school baseball started using or afforded the opportunity to use the fields at, or which. Obviously, that's pretty enticing to those folks. And also, they have been using the fields up at Williamstown. So they've kind of abandoned the fields here. You know, it's not like we can force them.
Yeah. And what about Little League? Do they use just the, the falls?
Primarily.
Yep. Because, actually, maybe this should be on our conversation with the school board too, to talk to them about how they want or are using Memorial Park and.
Yeah, absolutely. But getting back to the bleacher situation.
We're, we're thinking about spending $8,500 for bleachers at a spot where nobody's using?
Yeah.
Well, that's not, that's not entirely, I think that we. Well, one of the reasons they're not using the bleachers now is because the bleachers are not very usable.
But the field's not, I mean, if the, if the kids don't want to play on the field. But the field's not, I mean, if the if the kids don't want to play on the field for whatever reason, why do we have bleachers there?
Well, this might be part of a cycle of why don't they want to play on the field because we haven't taken care of the field?
Well, let's not spend eighty-five hundred dollars until we know that answer to that question.
But we should have a conversation and we should be maintaining Memorial Park. We should be, we should be activating it and using it more.
Why?
Why? Because we're dumping money into it because it's one of the few recreation areas that we have in this community that we've got the pool there, it's a safe place for kids to go, there's not very many places for them to go.
Well, there's, there's very nice.
Maintain the basketball courts.
There's very nice fields for for ball in the fall.
Those fields are great.
And so maybe we don't need that redundancy. Because if they can, if they can go to Norwich and that works out well.
If that's true about baseball, but we certainly need sports fields, the soccer fields, they don't have established. The fields at Doian are until the cemetery needs them, is my understanding.
Well. Maybe we need to have, maybe we need to have we need to have skateboard parks or basketball nets. Maybe we don't need to cater to organized team playing and we need to cater more toward stuff that people do.
I suggest that we talk to the school to see what their projections are on on field usage. And then we can have this discussion. But to, let's, let's not go down the path right now, we're talking about bleachers, we don't need to be talking about basketball fields, we'll talk about bleachers. That's.
That's right.
So we stay with the bleacher discussion, top came up that they're not using the fund. We tend, we now direct the manager to go find out what the school's intentions are. Or Dave, you can put it on the agenda for the select board and the school board to me.
Yeah, it should, we should have that in school, but it's not just the school, it's also the Dinamo's, Little League, all the clubs, understanding the various groups that use our renovation resources and what they need them for. We certainly need field space, I know we do, and we obviously shouldn't let bleachers just sit there and rot into the ground.
Well, I agree with that wholeheartedly. That's why my approach was maybe just putting wood on the system we have now is not the ultimate answer. Maybe we can have a bleacher system that's portable that can go from venue to venue that is very low maintenance. That's all I was trying to spur discussion on. I I would be against spending money on lumber just to replace seats in a facility that is not being used at the moment.
So we're asking the manager to check in with the sports teams?
And also get a price for portable.
Portable bleachers for the similar seating and checking back with the with Leslie Striebe because I believe that group had a request or made, I I just don't remember the details for concerts, et cetera.
Yeah, I remember that too, Dave. I think they also were wondering about portable stage, but I think you're right too that they also had seating.
Yeah. So that's a potential. So for the moment, we're not going to take any action on bleachers at Memorial Park, but thank you for putting it on and spurring the discussion. Installation of enhanced pedestrian amenities on Wall Street from the Common to Dog River Park. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked scoping project is underway. Hundred and fifty thousand is estimated as the local project match. Do we have any updates for that?
Just that the grant is in and we're in the waiting period and I think that we expect to hear an end of August or September about that grant.
Yeah, the end of August.
Okay.
We should keep in mind is that we may want to decide how formally we, like, do we want to really set these aside? Because they're not on Lori's sheet yet of like committed funds. Do we want to make a contingent, like, these are committed contingent upon receiving the grant? Are we not ready to do that? Because we're starting to run out, so.
Starting to run out of time.
Money, it's starting to run out of money.
Okay. You mean use up the money?
Yes. Do you all understand what I'm asking?
Yes, I do.
I understand it. So it should be a contingent upon receiving the grant. And isn't that the same thing that we did with the farmer's market?
Yes. Yeah.
Which made it on to. Based on grant award.
And we don't have, we don't have an updated fund summary, right?
We do not.
We don't get that?
We didn't get that this time.
Okay.
Due to vacation.
So we need to keep track that it's like my, so we had four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents plus the nine hundred, the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars of interest. But that's before we subtracted the fifty thousand for NCDN. But down below it has the contingent one is the farmer's market, so we could, if we wanted to make a motion to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the Wall Street project match as a contingent ARPA expense.
I would support that.
Could that just count as a motion in a second there? Was that clear enough?
In order, in order to have a motion, it has to be on the agenda.
It is, it's an ARPA request.
All right, if that passes muster.
That's how we're doing all of it.
It does. So the motion, right, Lydia, it's been seconded by Mary to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the amenities on Wall Street. Contingent upon grant award. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Just discussion. I'm not going to support any new spending for any new construction until we have fixed what's broken.
So if we get awarded a six hundred thousand dollar grant, you're going to turn it down?
The the six hundred, well, we're not obligated in any way to take a, take the hundred, take this money off. We don't need to have a motion, we can just keep it on the list. We can keep it on the list till the till the grant money comes in. But and I'm certainly side down with that, but I'm not going to, I don't see any I don't see any positive outcome of having new construction without the grant. So I don't know what the motion does if it's just still on the li- list.
So it's just like the farmer's market?
Right.
Where we've already applied for, the grant's already been applied for. We've already spent years working on this project.
I missed that part, I'm right through my, all right, never mind. Got it, got it. I didn't apply for that, I don't remember being done.
Right me in that Saturday Night Live, like, never mind.
The school.
All right, there's a motion out of the floor, it's been seconded, further discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstaining? Abstained or opposed, John?
Opposed.
Okay.
If we don't get the grant, the money just goes back to the ARPA, like, it's, we haven't spent it. Yeah, it's just that it's just that we won't spend that hundred and fifty thousand right now and not have it.
So so the vote is four, one, zero. To accept the grant or not to do anything else because we have, we have, what I talked about earlier is still on my mind about money coming into Northfield, it's a big deal.
It's not done until you sign a grant agreement.
Thank you. We've already approved.
To be followed by.
Yeah.
The digital municipal record request. Oh, I, here's one that we haven't really thoroughly thought out, and that's the Northfield Clerk and Utility Billing System. Billing system. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so Lori and I are doing some additional research as we talked about. Yeah, just due to vacations, Lori's been out quite a bit, just vacation, so that's on our list. We'll have much more detailed alternatives, again, rightfully so, there was concern about the hefty amount we came up with with the one software package that we already exist, so the next meeting we'll have second options, so to speak.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that from the board? Northfield Economic Development Grant Matching Funds, we have earmarked two hundred thousand, it hasn't been approved. What's your pleasure on that? Well, in my mind, if we don't, if we have ARPA funds left over, then I think that would be a good hole, for instance, if farmer's market doesn't get their grant, those folks, that would be the pool for that, but I I don't think we'll, I I'm not for authorizing anything that we can't change, so I just leave it on the page. Okay. Any other, any other input?
Yeah, I would say what I've said a couple times, that we should hold on to the interest for now, as long as, and let it keep growing. And then when we get towards the end, if there's funds remaining, but definitely that interest money could be set aside for grant matching in the future.
Hand the revolving fund or loan fund.
Yeah, potentially for that purpose as well.
Be perfect, please, Laura.
Yeah. And that would be easy to to do, we wouldn't have to do the resolution, at least if it was just that portion.
It's already, it's it's not encumbered.
Yeah.
That pretty much wraps it up. We just have one other request that's opened and we're waiting for additional information as it relates to the Northfield Middle School in the NCC request. I think everything else on the list has been either approved or denied. Yes, Lydia?
We talked, I think it was last time, about the Common project and it sounded like, at least I remember some people also being interested in saving or trying to save some funds potentially to be able to spend on what comes out of the study.
So should we put that as an item?
I don't know, I would look to hear if I recall that correctly, if others do not recall that. It is my wish anyways that we.
Well, I recall that.
I do too.
I recall that and I thought it was like, again, like the hundred thousand, it was like, well, let's see what's on the end of the table and what we can afford when we're done spending all this other money. After we find out how much change we need to.
I mean, at a minimum, just kind of like the things that are the least contentious, maybe that people want, that we can imagine fixing, like making it a little safer to cross the street there, making sure it's ADA accessible, maybe some lights or obviously something to either fix or somehow repair the fountain. It would, I can imagine that it would be very easy to spend quite a bit of money on these types of improvements. So in my mind, I feel like we should be saving like a hundred or two hundred or more thousand to be able to have some funds available.
Well, I think we also, the the Common Project Committee Subcommittee has been talking, has talked around the idea of crowdsourced funding, which is how all of the previous improvements on the Common were paid for.
Wrong.
Wrong?
Yes.
Okay.
We have quarter million dollar bond.
Oh, okay.
Plus who paid for that? Retaining wall, et cetera, and burying the electrical lines.
Oh, yeah.
Which we're still paying on.
Yes.
So it wasn't.
It wasn't all crowdsourced funding.
Wasn't crowdfunded.
Well.
In addition, I think.
Despite what some people might be saying.
Yes.
Thank you.
In addition, the manager said there were some grant funds too, so there were three sources.
I mean, I think we're going to need more probably than what we have in ARPA. So I certainly support crowdfunding, but I don't think we're going to get hundreds of thousands of dollars through crowds.
No.
No.
But it might help us with like a thirty to fifty thousand dollar portion of the project, maybe.
Well, I assume that like what happened with NCDN's path, that there is going to be I I I would think that there would be projects that would be, first you got to do this.
Phases.
Thank you, phases. And I would be interested to see what the phases are
Yeah.
to appropriate funds towards the first thing, you know, you don't, you got to build a foundation first. So you're going to have, if you're going to do something with the fountain, then, you know, is it wise to replace the water lines that may be as old as the fountain is?
Right.
So we have to ask those questions. And, you know, you can set aside whatever you want, but we're going to figure it out with the time after this report comes back, which is, I guess, imminent?
September. Yeah, that's what, we don't. I would just suggest that we don't spend all of the four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that we have before we get that report. Because it's the center of our community, it's the heart of our community.
Believe me, there is, if you go to the farmer's market on a day that's eighty-six degrees, you don't think that kids use that pool there. It's, it's a reason to, I mean, and they're cute, dude. Cute as a suspect, on a fire truck, those children are in a bomb, that cement bomb.
Remember, remember one time somebody rode their bike through there, round and round? Yes.
So Lydia, would you like to earmark a certain amount or do you think it just identifying, which we already have, Common Project Update Study, maybe opening that up and entertaining at a later date once we get our estimate? Well, get the three proposals and see what the costs are. I I I support your thoughts that we should, in the back of our minds, not spend at all in maintain some sort of balance for that important piece of our community, for sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I don't need to to set aside a specific dollar amount unless the rest of the board has the idea that they want to spend all four hundred and thirty-three thousand right now and don't want to save anything for the Common. But if we're kind of all in agreement that we want to hold some back, then we can talk about how much later, but just.
So we know the fountain is going to be anywhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars just to fix what is there now?
I think that's very optimistic.
That's what he said. He he came back a year ago when when the first offer was there to straighten out, the fountain was going to be a thirty thousand dollar bill. That's straightening out the fountain and as it exists today. No, no amendments.
Okay.
Right. Any other, anything beyond that, it's going to be ching to chain time.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And really, I mean, we might also, I'm sure the group will like be looking for grants because that may, maybe we use ARPA funds for a match for a grant for the Common because yeah, I think it's going to be cha-ching, cha-chang.
Oh, it will be. When we started the project, Common Project years and years ago, it was in three phases. And it was all by bonds. And I think we're only through two phases of it, maybe three. All right, so are we satisfied with our discussion of ARPA?
Yes.
All right, we can go on to Item D, Planning Commission Member Appointment, Mr. Manager?
Okay. We're fortunate, we have the gentleman in town, Mr. Hill, that's interested in participating on the Planning Commission. You do have a letter of support from the Chair of the Planning Commission for that appointment, so we'd be asking for the board to appoint Mr. Hill to the Planning Commission.
Make a motion to appoint Elroy Hill to the Planning Commission. Make a motion to appoint Elroy Hill to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Thank you, Elroy.
Further discussion. Good luck, Elroy. All those in favor of appointing Elroy Hill to the Planning Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining, five zero zero, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna table, per the manager's request, Development Review Board Alternative. Next item is Tom Manager's report.
All right, thank you. Main Street Waterline and Tank Replacement Project, as I noted in my report, that project remains kind of on schedule, still working with the state on a final funding letter, but we do have the finances understood with the state, we'll get, we'll hopefully get that letter this week, but... So the engineer is planning to, or myself and the engineer, planning to bid that project the last week of July. And so, obviously, once we get those bids, we'll do a tabulation and bring that to the board. Union Brook Road repairs, as I had mentioned, there's five or six sections on, small sections on Union Brook Road that do need some attention, so I've got quotes from a contractor to do that work. So we'll be signing that quote to move forth with those repairs. Excuse me. I have signed an engineering agreement in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars for the engineering of the Vine Street and Cross Street sidewalk project. Anticipate the engineer completing that work in, by September, and then we'll present the board to the, I mean, I'm sorry, to present the plan to the board. Cameras up at the park and the pool, we finally got that all together, those are up and running. We were able to replace those basketball hoops that were damaged at the park. Took some time to find the right ones to fit the bays. Also, too, we spent a little extra and got ones that we hope are shadowproof, we'll see. Hopefully, nobody will...
That's a challenging one.
Yeah, nobody will put that to the challenge. I have reached out to the Commodat at Norwich about the marching and the loud music.
Oh, thank you.
And we are working, as I mentioned, with Darn Tough on Building Improvement Grant, as we talked about, VEPSA, we've got what's called, they're calling it the Bernie Grant, it was a federal grant through Bernie's office to provide funds to VEPSA members to do energy efficient improvements, and Darn Tough is looking at doing some major roof and heating and cooling improvements. So we'll be working with them. The idea is that VEPSA will loan the money, but then they'll pay it back through the municipality, through their electric bill, that's what Senator Sanders wanted this to work out. We've talked to attorneys, talked with VEPSA folks, feel that that will work out. It actually may be even such that we'll get some of the staff time that's involved in that paid for, but that's a good thing, that the grant funds are there, and it'll enable Darn Tough Cabot to do some major improvements to their facility. I think that's it for now. Excuse me.
Thank you. Board members' comments, concerns, questions, Charlie?
Thanks, Dave, the noise ordinance, so recreational firearm discharge, I suggested to the Policy Committee, John, that we include that in the noise ordinance, you got that, my copy of that, right?
No.
No, it's just to John, the Policy Committee, I sent, did you get it?
Yeah.
It was copied to one of your many emails, I'm certain, but I'll send it again. But anyway, the approach that I suggest we take for recreational firearm discharge, the shooting range, has been, is based on folks that are intimate with firearm in Vermont and beyond, which is to include in the noise ordinance, and once you guys see, you'll understand that the noise ordinance is reference, referencing the zoning regulations, so it'll be the high density district, the medium density district, there's one industrial in Dexter, so it'll be by the zone, it basically says the former village, you know, but there you have it. And that will be coming through as a change to the noise ordinance. Just so, Jeff, are you using chlorine to fix the roads?
Yes, yeah.
You are, okay, 'cause that is a great way to fix the fines, smoothes out the road. Not only maintaining dust control, but...
So I know they, they've hit Lover's Lane pretty hard with that stuff, I'll check on it.
There's, there's some other roads, too, that, that traveling on wheels and wheels, but we won't have to worry about dust for the next couple of days, I believe we have to worry about flooding. Is there, we've been asking, I've been looking for a Central Vermont, Central Vermont Fiber update on, or how many, how much fiber has been deployed in Northfield, and how much CV fiber is going to make available? And the question that, I think it was Lydia, said that they're gonna run their own fiber just for competition thing, and I thought it was unjust served, so we got an answer for that?
It was a possibility, they talked about it, they didn't commit to it.
Well, we, it, it's now time to find out, because they're going to merge, and we need to find out where fiber isn't... You're looking at me like it's the first time you've heard this.
No, no, I just wanna make sure I understand. So I know the question was, have they laid anything?
Not, not Central Vermont Fiber. Where is the fiber in Northfield? Where, where is there not fiber in Northfield?
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Whether the indivi, I mean, I know there's fiber going through Chamberlain Road, and I talked to a lady today, that she says, I don't need fiber. I'm two houses away from the switching state, so I have great connectivity, I don't need to have fiber. Hey, great, but she has the ability to it. Where in Northfield is there no fiber?
Okay, I thought, I, where they were intending to...
Or where it is already in place, or where it's going to, either way you couch the question. The answer I'm looking for is how many places still need to be served by fiber that Central Vermont Fiber is going to come into Northfield and serve?
How many residents?
Right.
They had a map before.
We did.
That had underserved, have they updated it?
TDS gave me a map three years ago, and they said I would be one of the last ones, if they even entertained serving me, and I've got fiber. And they, it's, and it's, it's a monopoly that is disturbing, but anyway. So the, so the cat, the question is, how extent has the fiber deployment been in what area, or what areas are not served by fiber in Northfield? So however you couch questions, there's two ways to do it. And the other question is, does Central Vermont Fiber, do they have any intentions to compete where existing fiber is already there? So for instance, my friend on Chamberlain Road, she, if Central Vermont Fiber was by her house and TDS is already there, will she be able to have a choice?
Okay, got it.
Okay, so, and, and I mean, we've got a merger that's happening in ten seconds.
Has Tom gone to meetings already?
He has met with those, with the folks and the board, he's met all the board people, asked a lot of questions.
We'll find out if those are two questions that he's asked, because it's, what I'm thinking about, we have already obligated ninety thousand dollars to Central Vermont Fiber. We did not obligate to their merged partner. And if we, if we are a hundred percent served, and they're not gonna be in competition, I would like to get that money back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I did...
You can use it in the Common.
Yeah, so I, I had mentioned, so I have spoken to Mick Turn, Nick Letty about that, he doesn't feel that we can pull that money back, but I finally did get a written opinion from him today. I kept asking, where's that opinion, so I will forward that, forward that written opinion.
Was that with the merger piece? Because definitely the language we signed, they didn't commit to a specific, like, exact timeline of when they expend the funds in Northfield, but does, like Charlie's asking, does the merger give us an opportunity to say, these funds were not committed to this new entity, they were committed to CV fiber, and you haven't come to Northfield?
We did, we don't have a contract with anybody but Central Vermont Fiber. If they dissolve, and he thinks that there's no possibility to get that money back, I think we need to have someone involved in a merger lawyer. Because it is, well, of course, Vermont Yankee was a sale, but we were able to get out of some contracts with them, because it's just easier.
Yeah, well, I'll send you individually the, the opinion I finally got, actually, today. Again, we had discussions before, and I asked him to put it in writing, and I didn't get that today, so I'll forward.
All right, cool.
Does it say, how much of an obligation do they have to follow through on spending ninety thousand dollars in Northfield? Those funds were, I mean, committed to our town.
I mean, in the agreement, they talk about the commitment to Northfield.
They said that they could absolutely not be spent anywhere else, except in this community. So I agree, like, we need to ask, how, how will we be spending ninety thousand dollars in Northfield on fiber?
Part of the agreement, though, does where it's a little bit tricky, it's kind of tied to those ARPA deadlines. It does say that they do have until, you know, twenty twenty-six to, to spend those funds. So that kind of, from Mick's opinion, that kind of locks the town in, you know, by that, what's written into that agreement?
Well, the key to unlock that agreement is answering the question, how much, how much opportunity is there for Central Vermont Fiber to come to town if it's already got fiber over, and they're not going to offer competition?
I feel like they might even want to give it back to us, if they're like, we're not gonna spend it in your town.
We can't spend it in your town, here's your ninety thousand dollars back, would be a very nice gesture.
Yes, okay.
How often does that happen?
Well, really, do they want it in the news that they took our money?
If you can't see my approach on this, the news is gonna be part of it. This merger is, they're, they're refusing to return money that they're going, that was pledged for Northfield, that they're not going to use.
Well, that's to be determined.
That's the reason I'm asking for answers.
Yes. Important, very important answers.
Let's get the garden thing, the battery bank, could you put that on your tickler for just where that is?
I can.
That would be nice, people don't know about it, and I haven't heard anything about it. We're gonna have a utility meeting, I suppose, or something, are we gonna have one in July?
Yeah, no, actually, August first.
So that would be nice to get an update on that. I also, so last meeting, I asked what the school's procedure is for requesting FEMA funds from last July's fund. What did we find out about that?
So my understanding is, and I'm still getting more information, that, that they did not ask for funds. So, and they are not an entity that... So it's for municipalities to get funds, that's my understanding.
How does Norwich get funds?
Well, Nor... Mr. Chairman?
Right ahead.
FEMA, FEMA money was not applied for by the school system for damages created by the July flood.
That's, that's...
What?
That, that's my understanding.
Please put that on the agenda for the Select Board and Town Meeting, and find out why there is a hole in the process, and can they apply for the funds now with the numbers we just gave?
For that July period?
Yeah.
That, when that opportunity's passed.
But the December, there were December flood damages, they had damages...
They weren't FEMA, they weren't FEMA eligible.
Not in our county, right?
Golly!
Well, bring it up anyway, because it would be important to...
So I just wanna get this right. FEMA, the school system did not make claims for FEMA funds, and now they're asking for ARPA funds to...
I think you should, before you get really upset...
Oh, I'm not.
Wait and talk to them, because one, they probably
Unaware.
weren't thinking that they had damages that were eligible, and the trees came down in multiple events, not just July. I, I don't think this means that they're like asking us for something, that they should have been doing something different, but like I said, we, we can talk to them, but...
I'm just reacting to what I'm being told.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that FEMA funds for trees on a trail is really...
In, in a school envi, in an educational environment?
I don't wanna speak out of that.
Right. Well, you, you know, I would prefer FEMA to tell us that, and not...
It's not like you're in a school, and I...
All right. So the gen, so you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah, yeah.
The generator thing, when did you have a, when you, I asked for previous meeting that you open it up so people can make a site visit, when did you have a site visit, or did you have a site visit?
We did, so there's been site visits with both, both folks there.
When, when did you have a site visit?
So the folks from the...
You don't have to announce their name.
Yeah, so one was last week, and yeah, so both, both folks have visited the properties.
Were, were they there separately, or together?
Separately, yeah.
Was, what was the date that they were there? How many days did they have to complete, because you closed the bid process yesterday, right?
Correct.
That's what I read. So how many days did they have to generate their proposal?
The length of the bid period.
After the site visit.
Yeah, well, one was, came a couple of weeks ago, and the other was last week.
One bidder came two weeks ago, and the other bidder came last week?
Yeah.
So what day last week, just fun?
Friday. Friday, yeah.
And it was him? So he had, he had one working, two working days to generate a bid, and the other guy had two weeks.
Well, there was, yeah, it was at their choice.
All right, that, all right, you know I've been sensitive on this generator thing, because I just think that we are... All right, well, we'll see what the results were, and we'll see what the, what the process was, but I'm not, I, I don't have any planning on changing any decisions, but I, the, the, the procedure is, seemed to me slightly... Because you weren't even gonna have a site visit until I mentioned it, right?
Well, yeah, I mean...
You just went out to bid.
Typically, what we do is, if folks want a site visit, you know, we offer a site visit.
I know, but you got an idea of what the generator's gonna cost by a vendor. Then you went out to bid. The vendor already has, that vendor already has more information than anybody who's bidding on it. So the, the procedure is, is what I'm, what this board may wanna review and decide whether, if there's a better way to make it more transparent. Stony Brook Halfway between Covered Bridge and Pavement, it's got a slough where it's on a corner, and it should be included in your slough treatment. It's got, the side of the road is glassing.
Okay.
Stony Brook... It's not a big one.
All right.
But if there's two cars and they don't know it's there, it probably ought to have a cone at least, until it gets repaired.
Tell them about that little washout?
I'm sorry?
Tell them about that little washout?
Yeah, it's a washout, and about the size of a trash can. You found it?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I, 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 end my time, I relinquish my time.
Good, your time has now been taken up for the next three months, thank you, Charles. Mary?
I, I'm not gonna use up too much time, I already brought up... I already brought up the issue of, of the school, the traffic jams at the school, and the police having, you know, just let's smooth that out, and we're gonna talk about that at this joint. And so I'm happy about that. I also want to say that the police chief said that he often observes vehicles driving over the crossing right there at regular speed and not slowing down or pausing to cor- before they cross the tracks. I don't know, what do you think about that? I don't know, I don't pause, if the arm isn't down, I don't pause.
I think if they're under the speed limit.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's their suspension, not mine.
Yeah, so that was, just wanted to mention that I'm I've been made aware of this by the accessibility and walkability committee, and you all got those minutes too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Then the other thing I wanted to point out is that the people in the falls still don't have their and it's supposed to be done by the first of August, the falls pedestrians bump off.
Yeah, so, again, we, we bid the project, they awarded the bid, we have ordered the, all the flashy equipment. That's all paid, or that's all been ordered. Contractor, Mr. Nutbrown, keeps telling me he's got it on his schedule and he's gonna get to it as soon as he can. You know, part of the issue, and it's with contract...
What?
Oh, sorry, with contractors, you know, you say with rain and things like that, but, yeah.
So he's got, he's basically got two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, okey dokey. Well, I'll try to keep the people from the falls from getting their pitchforks and their, their stuff ready, because, you know, no- nothing like feeling neglected to make you wanna make a stink. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. John?
Well, I think we put in the budget for cool passes and swimming lessons?
For swimming lessons, yeah.
Is that going, so, has that been done yet?
So we've advertised, and also Shannon is, is trying to implement that. I think we've had a couple of takers. But again, I keep emphasizing the need to push that program, but again, we've advertised.
Where, where have we advertised? Sorry, John.
It's on the website.
I haven't seen it on Front Porch Forum.
I'll double check.
You mean something other than the regular lesson schedule?
Yeah, I'll double check. I was told that it was on...
And I've been told that people don't, there's a lot of people in this community don't read Front Porch Forum, and it would be really nice if somebody could make sure that it gets on Channel Seven. Because there, there's a lot of pe- I went to, I went to the meet and greet of the Labor Day Committee, and none of those people knew anything about the Common Project. Because we had had it all on Front Porch Forum and nothing on Channel Seven.
I mean, it was, I'm sorry, it was on, it was on Facebook.
I'm sure, you know, you can get naked and ride down the street on a white horse, and there'll always be people going, I didn't know that was gonna happen. So my point is, let's do it on Channel Seven, and I also believe from personal experience that if you're doing something nonprofit, like for the government, state, or local government, they'll let you do it for free.
Yeah.
And they'll write it up for you. So, phone call would be, and it would be perfect. And it would reach a, a, a demographic within this town that might actually need to take advantage of this.
I'd like to know exactly what this swim lesson program is, because is it reduced lessons for everyone? Is it reduced lessons only for some people? How do people know? I don't know any of the specifics. I know I paid for regular lessons, and I didn't see any other options.
Well, you're making the big bucks on the select board, you don't get, you don't get it.
I'm not looking for a discount. I just, if I didn't know what the discount was, then how is anybody else in the public gonna know? Like, we should know.
Yeah, I mean, we had the, yeah, I had the discussion two weeks ago, but yeah, we'll make sure.
I think we, didn't we put aside a thousand for events and activities at the pool?
Seemed to, I thought it was twelve hundred, but anyway.
Yeah, I think we, we did it in November, and we had it.
Been a few holidays since then?
Yes.
Sorry, John, I'm still a retard.
Has the ambulance engine been replaced yet?
Oh, yeah, that's all, all...
That's all taken care of?
Yeah, and the bill, you paid the bill.
And it's not the ambulance that got towed?
No.
Okay.
And, yeah, you paid the bill.
Wasn't it, it was the ambulance that got towed, but, because it got towed in December.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it wasn't.
So we got that all taken care of? Alright, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ready, yep?
Um, I was just wanting to check in, we've been talking about the section of sidewalk by Sweenards on Water Street, and if any steps have been taken.
Yeah, so I've spoken to Mr. Nutbrown, and he's gonna try and fit that in as well.
Okay. And I'm also wondering, so now that the Main Street Bridge is delayed, I know we all really wanted to wait on the sidewalks on the bridge and, right, abutting the bridge. They're so bad, and waiting two years?
Yeah, so...
I don't know what we can do to patch, or like, something that isn't super expensive, but makes it at least, you know, passable for people.
Yeah, so that, I have been working with the foreman, I said, and we've had this discussion for some time. I said, there's a number of key potholes that need to be fixed in town, plus the bridge.
Yeah.
So he, he has assured me that they'll purchase asphalt, repair some of the, the potholes. I mean, we're in pretty good shape compared to most towns, but we do have some, but he's going to make sure those are done, plus they're gonna start working on, on the bridge.
Right.
Yeah, I've had that discussion a couple of times, and I've been assured...
You just don't have a schedule. You don't have a schedule.
Well, with some of the potholes, there, he's, he told me he was gonna try to get those this week. And he told me that, I'll just hope the rain doesn't throw things off.
Right, two inches of rain.
Yeah, I know, or three.
In the, uh...
What?
Um, okay, another question you probably don't want to hear me ask again, but the striping.
Yeah, Carl has been, I've been pounding on these people. The person that, as I said, he said he's lost workers, and he's got projects, he keeps saying he's gonna get here. We are looking at alternatives. Yeah, yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's only, the, the season where
Oh, I know.
painting lasts starts in like April, May, and we're halfway through the time where it actually makes a big difference.
That's all I know, and we've been pounding on it.
I just feel so...
Don't they have crossing tape that you could, reflective tape that can be used as a, you just lay it down?
Yeah.
It takes, it doesn't matter, I get it.
Yeah.
But if we're not getting a contractor in?
Right.
What's, you, you, you gun deck, you can go out there with a roller, put some white paint down, put some glass beads in it, there you go. And you come up with a fix, you get it done.
Especially, you know, some of our most busy crosswalks.
Yeah.
Or the ones that are the hardest to see, because some of them...
That one in front of your house is the one I think?
It's really bad, and Washington Street, that one too, people don't stop there.
Prospect Street, I disturb it more, but anyway.
Okay, um, actually, since we're all talking about the flooding, just, or potential for flooding, has, are there preparations? What is the town doing to be prepared?
So we're just checking cohorts, doing the best we can, and only so much we can do. There's Velco and Remont Power having a meeting tomorrow, which I'll attend, be, I was doing, just to talk about their strategy for anything electric related.
Yeah.
So, what do you think?
Well, I feel awful for people who had bad experiences in the previous floods. I know every time we have one of these events, it's really anxiety provoking and scary for people, so... That's all, Dave.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear the potholes are gonna get fixed. I had a resident stop in my residence yesterday. He has a pothole since last September, stagecoach, so they're looking forward to getting that repaired by the end of the week. Flooding, that was gonna be part of mine. I attended the state awareness. Telephone call today at four o'clock, everything is set up in the center. They're on a wait and see, they're, they stated today that the storm could move fifty, seventy-five miles north-south, that will depend a lot. I was gonna ask the same questions. Are we being proactive, talking to Norwich about possible Plumley Armory, Armory use? If not, please do that in the morning, if we have to have a shelter. And this community has been through so many so recently. We'll just say a prayer tonight. I talked about the school board joint meeting. I will report back after I hear back from the chair, after their retreat and our proposal, and we'll probably have management coordinate the details. That's all I had. Next item on the agenda is public participation on schedule, like to be recognized. Mark Fornier's gonna approach the bench.
Mark Fornier, Union Brook Road. I've had a small list that kind of grew during the meeting.
You had a what?
I have a small list that's kind of grew during the meeting. I was gonna bring up the washout on Stony Brook when I drove by it today.
Yeah.
As part of my discussion about road maintenance. Years ago, when we started talking about Union Brook Road being fixed, we talked about road maintenance, how to plan for road maintenance. I personally haven't seen a lot of road maintenance. They've never cleaned the, the ditches out of Union Brook Road since it was built. There are places that were faulty from the construction, that were kind of broken pavements on the edges, never got fixed.
Some of it did, but, yeah, they had more to do.
There's a lot that didn't get fixed. I drive it every day. They're not cleaning trees out when they fall in the ditches. I've had to remove trees off my own road to get out, which I'm more than happy to do. I just don't feel like our road crew is getting out to do maintenance enough. Maybe certain roads are getting it, certain ones aren't. But certainly, a few days after a rain, there shouldn't be a semi-washout on Stony Brook that you can go into if another, if you meet another car. We shouldn't have to worry about our ditches being filled with fallen trees and debris, plugging it up, thus washing water across the road. That road was said to have lasted probably ten years if we keep up maintenance, almost zero maintenance on Union Brook. I mean, even our stormwater problem on Union Street, like, go through it, it rains. One of the drains is above the water level, and never has any water in it, Union Street, right on the end of it. It's been high since the day they installed it. There's another one that's like three inches low, you, you go around it because you're gonna damage to your car. You know, I think that we have a serious lack of road maintenance. I see people praising the road crew all the time on Front Porch Forum and on Facebook, and I, I'm sorry, I have to disagree, I'm not trying to diss our guys, but I don't think the management is good. We, in my opinion, we haven't had good road management since we lost it, since we didn't have a commissioner anymore. It's my opinion, and I've asked this question before, before the board, do we need another road commissioner? So I'm gonna take it. I mean, sorry, John, you can't do it, you've got too much on your plate. And I think that's what you're doing right now. You know, because I always hear, I'm talking, I'm talking about this, I'm talking about that, but you, you can't do everything. You're a town manager, not a road commissioner, and I think it's time for this board at some point to revisit, whether it be next budget season or whatever, about getting a road commissioner, someone that knows what they're doing. He has to be part-time or full-time that can manage this road crew. So, that's the one thing. The other one is, we put up cameras by the covered bridges. I talked to Trent one day when he was out there, he was unhappy because the batteries kept dying, he wasn't getting pictures. Mary talked to me about this a long time ago, and I suggested a system, which would be expensive, or game cameras, and use a cellular, cellular variety, which is, I think, what you went with. But you got battery-operated ones, and I had suggested solar-powered ones, solar-powered ones.
Yeah.
You never charge them, they charge themselves. I have them for game cameras, they work amazing. So I'm just curious where we stand on catching people wrecking our bridges.
Yeah.
Are those cameras working, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we've caught, we've caught a couple of folks, yeah.
Good, because it's nice to know that we're investing money that's being taken care of, you know, we're catching people. We talked a little bit about publishing things so people can see it, you know? I only knew about the generator thing because I came to a meeting or two, and I was actively looking for it on the website, but that website's not easy for people that don't know what they're doing to find stuff. Yeah, I mean, something like the bid pools for generators under notices, that's easy. Try finding the minutes. People like me have a hard time finding the minutes at this meeting, to see what it's about. We have a hard time finding out about swimming pool stuff. I've never seen any of that, I've never even heard of it. Granted, I come to every one of these meetings I can. So I think we need to do more about advertising. You know, you're talking about the revolving loan fund, how do people find out about that? It needs to be plastered, we can put it on bulletin boards, we can have businesses help them promote it, we can put it all over Facebook, all over Front Porch Forum, and not just once, like repeatedly, in my opinion. Like, get the word out on this stuff, you know what I mean? In more of a way that actually gets people to see it, because a one-time post doesn't get people to see it. It just doesn't. There's probably a lot of stuff going on in this town that people just have no clue about. And I, and I post on, on all the sites I'm on, people are like, what about this? Like, the gun range thing came up. I'm like, go to a select board meeting, huh? Where are they, what are they? People don't even know where these meetings are, you got one guy comes to every meeting. No one else unless they want to present something, you know, I mean, I don't think the information's up now. I think it, it needs to be more community awareness. People need to take their own responsibility too, but certainly it could be published better. And I'm not just talking about the meetings, but everything. So then this revolving loan, again, that's something I've never heard of in this town. If it got out, maybe you'd get more funding, you know? I heard someone say something about people could use it if they're having a hard time, like businesses, I don't think that's a good idea. You give it to a business that's having a hard time, maybe it helps them, maybe they fail and they don't pay it back. Like, there's a generous building, housing up here on the top of the hill, it's a great building. That's gonna be an affordable housing unit, you got a grant from the state to help build that. Like, if you want to create an affordable housing, look at projects like that. Like, little ones that you could help, like, a current homeowner that has extra space, develop into another unit with our loan, that would be a great use of it. You know, helping a small business, like, I don't know how they did the Common Cone. The Common Cone was amazing, right? Like, if people had a way to get those funds to start up a little business like that in this town, every other business in this town should want that, because it just builds more business and helps more businesses out. Like, that's the perfect kind of thing for this revolving loan, in my opinion, right? Get someone like that that wants to open a small business in our town and help them out. Maybe the revolving loan could be used as like a tax offset. Like, hey, listen, we're gonna give you this loan to offset your taxes for the work here, to get on your feet, but you do have to pay it back at a very low interest with no fees.
Mark, you just volunteered for the economic development.
When you, when you brought it up, I went like this. So anyway, I'm just saying, there's things like that, that, you know, that we could, that we could look at, that's all. And advertising it, like, try to get some business sponsorship, like, darn tough, darn hard. Maybe they'd help actually put some funds back into that. Because more people in town, I mean, there's more workers for them.
They can't get enough work.
You should see the line coming in from a footer in the morning.
Yeah.
Because they can't get everybody from Northfield, which is obvious anyways, but like, like, you know, we have a couple housing projects that were being talked about in the town. You get more people, you need businesses. You get businesses, then people go to work, and maybe they get more up. So maybe some business sponsorships could help with that funding, if we actually reached out and seek it, you know what I mean? Like, hey, would you be willing to help commit to this? Maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't. I mean, maybe Northwood, what else? So those are just some thoughts I had, like, sent to the meeting tonight. Hopefully, maybe help out.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
I don't have that now, it's possible.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else would like to be recognized for public participation? Okay?
I'm happy.
Um, okay, and there is no need for executive session?
No.
Mr. Manager?
Oh, no, sorry.
Is there a need of executive session?
No, 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 there is not.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Moved consecutive, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Want me to use John, I have forward policy.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you, Dave.
You want the Norwich one?
Feel better?
Of course, I think I sent it to Gio or something.
That's your formal letter of appointment.
Oh, yeah, that's the one I usually send to you.
So, this is the information from your board.
I don't know where it was.
That's the right one, though, I think.
Open meeting, fascinating.
Stuff to sign.
That's my second...
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Primary is Norwich.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Tertiary one is Northfield.
That one doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
Although, I, I wish everybody would use them, like...
It would be nice, but I told you why I'm, I'm not gonna do it.
Um, yeah, I have one, I stole one from the drawer.
Why are you not doing it?
One reason is that Dave Maxwell, I got an email from Dave Maxwell saying, I need your help on this project.
Charlie, that is the town's cybersecurity safety.
Yeah, I didn't check his, I think it said Dave Maxwell. I didn't check that it wasn't his email, because he got two, and it was a Yahoo email, so I didn't, I just responded, 'cause it was in the Northfield month.
Those are the tests.
And then, it was...
Some of them, anyway.
Oh, I guess I've got a really good spam filter on my machine, because I get off, offers for marriages and riches, and access like, nah, I'm not gonna go through this crap. I'm gonna infect my machine if I accidentally click on it.
Charlie, many of those are sent to you intentionally by the town to make sure that you don't fall for the real ones, they're tests.
Oh, well, wouldn't it have been cute if they, uh, told me that?
Well, it's hard for you if you do the trainings.
I didn't do the training.
To expect...
You know why I didn't do the training? Because I'm not gonna take the time when my Apple program is excellent in keeping stuff up. I know.